The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Switzer, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Con, Alderman Orion, Alderman Ballmer, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Sanyay, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Brownie, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman Tyus,
Present.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Eight present, you have quorum.
A quorum being present, we will be led in opening reflection prayer by Reverend Dr. Katie Nix, Lead Pastor at Grace U.
Good morning, beloved. Oh, no, no, this isn't church. You may be seated. Don't we have to stand? I was told this was going to be an easy meeting, so I thought, well, maybe I'd practice my sermon on everyone. But now, now I'm nervous. I'm just kidding. Beloved, I'm going to offer for you today this prayer from one of my favorite books, and it is a prayer for those whose labor is unseen. For I have a feeling that you spend a lot more time hearing angry complaints than thank yous, that all of the extra hours you put in sending emails and doing things are often unappreciated. And so this prayer is for all of us who work behind the scenes to get things done and are never really given the recognition that sometimes we feel like we deserve. And so I offer this prayer to you. O Lord, who works in a thousand unseen places, I pause in your presence as I begin my work today. Nothing is unknown to you, and you know that my labors often go unrecognized by others. At times, this has disheartened me. Yet I believe this: To work is a valuable gift. You've placed me here with an opportunity to tend these tasks for your glory and for the good of your children. May I not be blind to the beauty before me. Be thou my vision, Lord; for in your sight the task at hand becomes an act of worship. And as the touch of your hand sweeps through, may these labors be sanctified. Holy Spirit, meet me in this work with the power of your presence; for in your presence there is fullness of joy. Yes, there may be joy here also, even in this. For how much of your work, O God, is unnoticed? You have created all things, and by your spirit they are sustained. How often do I neglect to thank you for the breath in my lungs, for the grasp beneath my feet, for the varied flavors of food and colors and laughter? You have worked all these things into your creation. Indeed, the world revolves around your unseen acts. Yet despite our lack of acknowledgement, you are constant in care and unceasing in service. May I humbly follow this pattern? And as I go about my work today, give me eyes to see you at work in the world. Let me not forget the centuries of good and faithful servants who were never recognized on earth, but whose heavenly reward awaited them, secure and unseen. May I be more attuned to brothers and sisters and siblings around me who are simply laboring many in more trying circumstances than my own? Let me work today to the rhythm of your word, inhaling and exhaling my very breath declaring your abundant kindness. Great is your steadfast love, and your faithfulness endures forever. And now, Lord, establish the work of my hands, not for my name, but for yours, that these labors might bring blessing from trial, peace from chaos, flourishing from barrenness, justice from abuse, and beauty from its lack. I give you my work as an offering. Do with it as you will. For my deep satisfaction comes not from being seen by others, but from being profoundly and forever seen and known by you. And all of God's people said, amen. Blessings on you today and the work that you will be doing.
We will dispense with the regular order of business to take up the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Courtesy Resolutions 201, 202, and 203.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Courtesy Resolutions 201, 202, and 203.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Aldermen from the 14th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Courtesy Resolutions 201, 202, and 203. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Con, Alderman Orion, Alderman Ballmer, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Sanyay, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Brownie, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Thirteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th. If you could please place Resolutions 201, 202, and 203 at the end of the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
So noted.
With that, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the presentation of Resolution 202.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. While I invite the family of Queen Esther Jean Hill Haywood to the podium, I would like to ask 9 o'clock if she would read from the resolution.
Resolution 202 honoring Esther Jean Hill Haywood. Whereas on Saturday, November 16th, 2024, Esther Jean Hill Haywood passed away after a prolonged illness. Born on January the 15th, 1940 in Memphis, Tennessee, she was the daughter of John and Esther Hill. Esther accepted Jesus Christ at an early age, and throughout her life, she remained committed to service. And whereas, as a high school student, Esther volunteered with her Church Missionary Society on Sunday afternoons, visiting the elderly and disabled in the community. She graduated from Buret Chapel High School in Arlington, Tennessee, before attending Lincoln University in Jefferson City, where she majored in music. It was there she met the love of her life, Elwood J. Haywood of East St. Louis, Illinois. Soon after Esther Hill became Esther Haywood, she later graduated from Mississippi Industrial College in Holly Springs, Mississippi, with a bachelor's degree in music education. She completed master's coursework in mathematics education from St. Louis University. Whereas after their marriage, Elwood and Esther Haywood returned to Tennessee to begin their teaching careers. Esther taught in Marion, Arkansas for three years before moving to Memphis, Tennessee, where she recruited to help integrate the Shelby County Public School System. Whereas Esther and Elwood moved to St. Louis, where they both accepted positions with the East St. Louis School District 189. Esther dedicated over 27 years of service to the district, most notably as the math specialist in federal program Project Countdown. Whereas although her career in public education was primary vocation, Esther dedicated, I'm sorry, Esther's dedication to her community was boundless. She served as the Youth Advisor for St. Louis City NAACP throughout the late 1970s and 80s, earning national recognition for the chapter's growth and influence. Whereas Esther was a chapter of the Omicron Etta Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, where she remained an active member for decades. Whereas for over 50 years, Esther was a leader in civil rights and social justice, both local and nationally. Whereas in 2000, Esther was selected to the Missouri House of Representatives, where she served the 71st District. She was the Vice Chair of the Subcommittee of Appropriations for Higher Education, advocating for increased funding for Lincoln University and University of Missouri-St. Louis. Whereas as the contributions did not go unrecognized, she received numerous prestigious awards, including the Hill-to-Hill Award from Lincoln University, the Lifetime Achievement Award from American Federation of Teachers, the NAACP National Youth Work Award, the Urban League Salute to Women in Leadership Award for Civil Rights, and the AT&amp;T Missouri Legislator of the Year Award. She was also honored with the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Unsong Award, the University of Missouri Legislator of the Year Award, NAACP Margaret Bush Wilson Lifetime Achievement Award, among many others. One of her proudest moments came in 2018, when she, when the NAACP St. Louis County branch unanimously elected her president emerita, recognizing her over 50 years of leadership. Whereas outside her public life, Esther was a devoted wife, mother, and grandmother. She and Elwood shared over 55 years' marriage, during which raised two daughters, Dr. Atlanta, I'm sorry, Dr. Angela and Estella. Esther was the epitome of a matriarch, a trusted advisor, mentor, and a friend, both her biological and honorary family members. Now therefore be resolved by this Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis, that we pause in our deliberation to celebrate the life and legacy of Honorable Esther Jean Haywood. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings to prepare a commemorative copy to the end, that it may be presented to the family of the honoree at the time and place deemed appropriate by its sponsor. Introduce this 22nd day of November, 2024, by the Honorable Shamim Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman of the 10th Ward.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Dr. Gaskins and John, I want you all to know that none of us down here take for granted, not for a second, the honor that we have to be able to recognize your beloved mother and grandmother this way. When I look back in service, and I know we have generations of service here, that we can look where our families have, have been intertwined, from her serving in my grandfather Joseph Clark at the St. Louis City NAACP, to serving in the legislature with my husband, and us serving here together. Our grandparents are smiling, John, at the work that we are looking. But that comes from the foundations and the seeds that they planted, the examples that they set in the community. And being able to capture it this way in the St. Louis City history, official history of the city of St. Louis, I think it goes immeasurable as to how much we know that we need to honor and make sure that her name and her legacy remains, and we can continue to serve in it. So I thank you for trusting me with this, with being able to do this and honor you all this way. And I want you to know that I myself, as long as my family, will be in continual prayer for you all, with peace, to be still, and I'm lifting you all up.
I am humbled and honored to be able to receive this on behalf of my mother, Esther Jean Hill Haywood. I appreciate you making the decision, and this young woman deciding to lead that effort to make sure that Esther Hill Haywood would receive the recognition that she so deserves. And I don't say that because she's my mother. I say that because she is who she is. So thank you once again for recognizing her today, and I wish you well as we enter this holiday season of Thanksgiving.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 3rd.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to extend my deepest condolences to the Gaskin-Haywood family on their loss. It's never easy to lose a matriarch, especially one that was just so prominent and powerful and wonderful and kind, and has passed on through the next generations in her family's service as an important quality in raising a family. And I am very proud of the work that she has done as well. I am proud of the family that she has created, that has put roots here in St. Louis and has done such magnificent work in our communities. And I have lost both my grandparents and parents and whatnot, so I completely understand the grief that you all must be going through. And it comes in waves. So we have opportunities like this where we get to celebrate her life and be there for her and be there for you. But know that we are also here in those moments of grief when it's not as easy to stand up and be the people that we want to be all the time. And certainly, John is a neighbor of mine as well, and I've already told him that I'm there for him if he ever needs me. But I would like to actually make a motion that we pass this resolution in bank.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 1st, that we bank Resolution Number 202. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That now means that every member of the Board of Aldermen has signed on as a cosponsor. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I want to pretty much ditto my fairy godmother from the 3rd Ward of his comments, and also just send my condolences, John, and to your mother. I know similar to what you guys are going through, something that happened to me also earlier in the year. And I want you all to know that your son, John, is so loved. And I know us loving him means that we love you. And if it's anything that we ever can do or a space that we ever need to be in, we'll absolutely be there. John, you know, I love you so much. You have always supported me in my time in the Capitol and beyond that. And any way I could return that favor in a time of grief right now, you know you have me and my family praying with you and also willing to stand up and just be there and just listen or just be in a space where we don't have to talk and can just hang out. So I love you all so much.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, want to also just say we are all so sorry for your loss, but we also know that her memory lives on in perpetuity through the acts of service that she did while on this earth. And so while she might not be here in the physical form anymore, we know that her spirit lives on. And the impact that she has had on our community is everlasting. So thank you so much for coming today. Anyone who wants to have a picture, please meet on the steps. Madam Clerk, I had an error earlier and want to ask that Resolution 203 go to first reading resolutions rather than the sent calendar.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolution sent calendar.
Madam President, we had a few that wanted to speak on the resolutions. Do we do that now or wait till after the? Okay.
Let's do the motion and then.
All right. I move that we adopt the Courtesy Resolutions sent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution sent calendar. Is there discussion? Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I want to speak on Resolution Number 201 just briefly, honoring Gary Crouch. If people remember Forest Park back in the 80s and 90s compared to what Forest Park is today, it is just night and day difference. We had what is now the gem of our region just falling into complete disrepair. It was not well lit. There were serious safety concerns. I remember when I was a young kid, my parents wouldn't even let me go to Forest Park because of the safety. And when Gary and a group of individuals back in 1960, I believe, put together Forest Park Forever, it was just a group of concerned citizens that saw the potential in the park and wanted to, wanted to work with the city to make it a better place. And through years of work and raising funds and a lot of hard work, they were able to make Forest Park what it is today. And it's just incredible. I have the privilege of living close to it, and I utilize the park frequently. Frankly, I wish that we had a Forest Park Forever type organization for every one of the parks in our city. And with that, I would ask that we make Resolution 201 in bank.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 4th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we make Resolution 201 in bank. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you. I would ask, could the clerk please read Resolution Number 196?
Resolution 196 honoring Ann Mendestam. Whereas Ann was born August 19, no, I'm sorry, August 1939, to Thomas and Helen in Terre Haute, Indiana, as the eldest of three daughters. Whereas she earned a Bachelor of Science and Master at St. Louis University and her Master of Liberal Arts at Washington University. And whereas Ann lived fully by her strong values and sense of purpose, she led with kindness, generosity, courage, and a sense of justice, endless curiosity about the world, and great sense of humor. Whereas Ann described the three most important aspects of her life, her high school, I'm sorry, as her family, her high school teaching, and her career 35 years in Ladoo School and John Burroughs School, volunteering with the Final Exit Network. And whereas Ann loved being outdoors in nature beauty, in natural beauty, being around animals of all kind, reading classical and music opera, her long frequent walks, and cooking delicious meals for her family. Whereas Ann was enthusiastic volunteer, advocate, and I'm sorry, an advocate for countless good causes throughout her life. And whereas Ann leaves to cherish her memories her three children, John of Columbia, Maria of California, and Amy of Massachusetts, as well as her grandchildren. Now therefore be resolved by this Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis, that we pause in our deliberation to recognize and honor the life and legacy of Ann. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of the resolution of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings to prepare a commemorative copy to the end, that it may be presented to the honoree at the time and place deemed appropriate by its sponsor. Introduce this 22nd day of November, 2024, by the Honorable Michael Browning of the 9th Ward.
Thank you. I think some of us knew Ann. And to say that she was someone who gave everything of herself to make her community better, to make her city better, and her country better, it's an understatement. She gave her entire life to teaching, to giving of herself to others, and just making sure that, you know, she left a better world than she found it. And I think in the 9th Ward, we noticed her absence. She passed a couple of weeks ago, and already I've had so many people approach me and just talk about their memories of her. I would think that if we could all live a life like hers, it would be a life well-lived. So she will be remembered, and she will be missed. And I appreciate taking the time to let me speak on this wonderful person today.
Madam Clerk, if you could please add me. Resolution 196, actually did not know that Ann had passed away. Ann is one of the, was one of those just amazing people that over the years, the number of just like quick emails and text messages I would get from her. She would watch these board meetings quite often. And I'd get a little message that would be like, you go, girl! And things like that, just a ray of sunshine. And she's going to leave a really big hole in the community in terms of her work and her advocacy. So my heart is with her and her family. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the Board. First, I would like to add my condolences to both of you all, especially being here to witness your obvious heartfelt condolence for her. So I'm sorry about that. I did want to make for the record to add that all the persons from the 5th, the 3rd, the 13th, the 11th, and the 8th to Resolution 198, please.
Madam Clerk, if you could please make note of that. Alderwoman from the 1st.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I also knew Ann pretty well. She reached out to me when I first started running and was just a really big champion, I think, for so many women who've run for office and so many people on the board here, including Alderman Browning. Just somebody who would do whatever she could. I mean, she wrote postcards for my campaign in like perfect cursive, and I can't imagine getting one of those postcards and being like, no, I don't trust this lady. Definitely trust her. So I just would like to make a motion to make Resolution 196 in bank.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 1st, seconded by the Alderman from the 4th, that we make Resolution 196 in bank. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution sent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Introduction of honored guests, Alderwoman from the 10th. No. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I would like to have as my honored guest the members of SLMP.
as my honored guest the members of S L M P D that were officially promoted on Tuesday night. And even more honored guest would be the twelve new officers that swore in last night, the class of twenty twenty-four dash oh one. I want to wish them the best of luck as they are out there patrolling and keeping the streets safe. Thank you.
Alderman 14?
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I would like to have as my honored guest the hard-working men and women of the Water Department. There was a, a huge main break that happened on Tuesday that affected areas of the fourteenth ward and the eighth ward. I think continuing to just stress how important infrastructure is when it comes to water, as well as thank Director of Operations Nancy Cross for keeping both Alders' people updated. Also want to have as my honored guest my N I S Officer Ms. Harris, as well as Commissioner of Supplies Chris Carter, and the hard-working man of the Tow Division who was able to help yesterday tow and tag several derelict buildings, or several derelict cars in the fourteenth ward in the College Hill neighborhood. But thank you.
Further introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the 9th?
Uh, thank you. I'd like to have Hank Melford as my honored guest. Hank is up in the gallery, usually is, but today I'm having him as my guest because Hank works for Outfront Media who recently moved their headquarters here into the city in the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood. So we're grateful to have a new business in the city and grateful for Hank and his dedication to the work we do here. So thank you and thank you, Hank.
Alderwoman from the 11th?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Honored guests today are the men and women of our St. Louis Police Department, and especially the new recruits who were just crossed over down to become police officers. And I am praying for them. I ask that everyone pray for our officers. And I'm just so happy that we have young men and young women who are willing to step up to do this very important work for our city. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 7th?
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I would like to have as my honored guest Talaw, who's in the gallery today. He is my brother, and we actually were in an organization together in the very, very beginning of my activist days. I think he has a press badge on him today, so I think he's here on some media-related things. But I would like to have him as my honored guest. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 6th?
I would like to have as my honored guest my constituent Erin O'Reilly from the, in the gallery. So thank you.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I move that we approve the minutes Friday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 5th, that we approve the minutes from Friday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the, and D of the agenda and has been placed in the Google Drive for your review. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the civilian oversight board. Kristen Griffin.
Alderwoman?
I'm sorry. I respectfully request to approve your appointment sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderman from the 4th, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointment to the civilian oversight board.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we refer this appointment to public safety.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 4th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we send the mayor's appointment to the civilian oversight board, to the public safety committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Seeing none, Alderman from the 9th, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 139 for-
Thank you. I would move that we suspend the rules to introduce Board Bill number 139.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 139. This is a non-debate motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Combs? Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez? Alderwoman Sanier? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge? President Green?
Aye.
Fifteen aye votes. By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 9th. If you could please place Board Bill 139 at the end of the first reading of board bills.
So noted.
First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 136, sponsored by Alderman Combs, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Comptroller, and the Board of Estment and Apportement, making findings respecting the transfer of a maximum of thirteen million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hu- seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars of excess monies that the City of St. Louis owner and operator, St. Louis Lambert Airport, intends to transfer from the debt service stabilization fund to the airport revenue during fiscal year twenty twenty-five, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 137, sponsored by Alderwoman Velazquez, an ordinance establishing a municipal identification card program in the City of St. Louis to provide all residents access to a recognized former government issued photo identification. Board Bill 138, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Maryland Comptroller of the City of St. Louis to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum of one dollar and other good and valuable consideration, a quitclaim deed to remind and release forever quitclaim unto Carol Wade, certain city-owned property located at City Block Thirty-seven, Fourteen, which property is twenty-five feet by a hundred and fifty-two feet and eight and a half inches in gray addition. Lot seventy-six, known and numbered as forty-six zero six St. Louis Avenue, in the City of St. Louis, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 139, sponsored by Alderman Browning, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing the City of St. Louis, Missouri, to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds in the principal amount of not to exceed thirty-seven million dollars for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of constructing an industrial development project in the city, providing a plan for such projects, authorizing the, and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute certain documents related thereto and take certain other actions as are necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Madam Clerk, if you could please add me as a cosponsor to 137 and assign 139 to the HUDs Committee.
So noted.
Reference to Committee of Board Bills.
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 136, to Legislation, Board Bill 137, and to HUDs, Board Bill 138 and 139. That's the extent of reference to Committee of Board Bills.
Second reading report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of HUDs Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 125, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer and the, and President Green, and the following cosponsors: Aldridge, Browning, Combs, Clark Hubbard, and Sanier. An ordinance requiring property owners to prevent and remediate mold in rental dwelling units prohibiting the owner of rental dwelling unit from obtaining a certificate of inspection if mold is present, providing for notice protocols to owner where mold is found, requiring owners to notify tenants of units where mold is found, directing the Department of Health to create materials with information about mold prevention, remediation, hazards, empowering the Building Division to enforce this ordinance, imposing penalties for violating this ordinance, providing for an effective date containing an emergency and a severability clause. Board Bill 126, as amended in committee, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and President Green. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement, amending ordinance number seven one three nine three, seven one four nine four, ordinance number seven one five five four, seven one five five five, seven one five nine one, seven one five nine two, seven one six five zero, seven one eight four one, and ordinance number seven one eight six four, by re-appropriating certain amounts specified herein as in an aggregated amount of eight million, nine hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-eight cent for purposes with an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of Public Infrastructure and Utilities with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 104, committee sub-sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, an ordinance repealing ordinance number seven zero nine two four, codified as Chapter twenty-five point seventy, seventy-four of the Revised Code of Ordinance of the City of St. Louis, enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance to be known as Utility Coordination Policy Providing Exemptions for Emergency Maintenance Work. Board Bill 133, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, Alderman Browning, and Alderwoman Keys. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the City of St. Louis, establishing multiple public works and improvement projects on the Laurel and Waterman Bridge, traffic management enhancements on South and North Broadway, River de Pere Boulevard, bus stop upgrades on Grand, Dale Moyn Cast, with the City of St. Louis containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 134, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Aldridge and Alderwoman Keys. Pursuant to ordinance number six eight nine three seven, the proposed bill authorizing honorary name, street name, Pastor C.D. Wells' Way, which shall begin at the intersection of Palm Street and Jefferson Avenue to the intersection of Heber Street and Jefferson Avenue. That's the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Report of special committees.
We have none.
Board bills for perfection consent.
Board Bill 129, sponsored by Alderwoman Sanier. An ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Clem Street and McCree Avenue in the Botanical Heights neighborhood in the Seventh Ward to regulate traffic traveling in all directions containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 130, sponsored by Alderwoman Sanier, pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three three three, as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four, and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps on the forty-two-hundred block of Folsom Avenue to calm the floor traffic in the Botanical Heights neighborhood within the Seventh Ward, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 119, committee sub-sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement, appropriating the Department of Health funds received by the City of St. Louis pursuant to national opioid, opioid settlement agreements, authorizing the expenditure of such funds to the extent received, authorizing contracts and other documents to extend such fund, I'm sorry, expand such funds to the extent received, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 113, sponsored by Alderman Orion, Alderwoman Sanier, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission, amending portions of ordinance number seven one seven three zero to provide updates to the definition for the short-term rental permit and a short-term rental unit, amend zoning codes, section twenty-six point zero eight, so that incorporates the definitions created under ordinance number seven one seven three zero, and update zoning code two six point seven six to mirror provisions pertaining to the St. I'm sorry, to the short-term rentals located in single-family A zoning districts that are contained in ordinance number seven one seven two nine, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 120, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Switzer, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance authorizing the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis to execute a contract for sale with certain terms, including the receipt of and in consideration of the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars with contingency for finance among, among others for youth, I'm sorry, young voices with action, a Missouri nonprofit corporation to purchase certain city-owned property located in City Block Five Thousand, which property is known and numbered as fifty-nine thirty-seven through forty-seven Dr. Martin Luther King in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, six three one one two, containing a severability clause. That's the extent of board bills for perfection consent calendar.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I move that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Alderman from the 4th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I request to be added as a cosponsor to Board Bill 120.
Madam Clerk, if you could please make note of that.
So noted.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
We have none.
Report of engrossment.
Board Bill Sixty-three, as amended on the floor, and Board Bill One Zero Two-
Third reading and final passage of board bills consent.
Board Bill, Board Bill Sixty-three, as amended on the floor, and Board Bill One Zero Two.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I move that we adopt the third read, final passage, board bills consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Combs?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez? Alderwoman Sanier? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge? President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg? Fifteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading and final passage of board bills.
We have none.
Report of the finally passed and signed by the President.
Sixty-three, as amended on the floor, and Board Bill One Zero Two.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix her signature here to again that these may become law. First reading of resolutions and reference to committees.
Board Bill One Ninety-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Velazquez, approval of the twenty-twenty-five Tower Grove Concerned Citizens Special Business District Budget.
Alderwoman from the se- sixth, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution Ninety-five.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that this bill, that this resolution gets sent to Legislation and-
Uh, there, is there a second? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the sixth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we send Resolution One Ninety-five to the Legislation and Rules Committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Two Zero Three, sponsored by Alderman Browning, RPA for redevelopment project.
Alderman from the 9th, you are recognized on Resolution Two Oh Three.
Thank you. I would move that we suspend the rules to introduce Resolution Number Two Zero Three.
We already introduced it.
Okay. In that case, I'd like to move that we send Resolution Number Two Oh Three to the HUDs Committee.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the first, that we send Resolution Two Oh Three to the HUDs Committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions and reference to committee.
Second reading resolutions, committee reports and adoption?
We have none.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business?
We have none.
Announcements?
Thursday, November twenty-fifth, the office is closed. I know, Thursday the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, the office is closed in honor of Thanksgiving. Friday, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, the office is, the office will be closed in honor of Thanksgiving holiday. That's the extent of the announcement.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the 4th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I just want to inform my colleagues and the general public, as I told the Alderman from the- the Fourteenth that I would, the surveillance technology use plans are up and on the website. We had a discussion about that last week. I anticipate having hearings on those on December 11th and 12th. There's a lot to go over, so potentially two days of hearing, but just wanted to, to let, A, all of my colleagues, and B, anyone who may be listening know that at my first opportunity. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the Tenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Tenth Ward, it's our time of month again. This is our one, and then we create and hold space every last Monday of the month to come together and discuss solutions and resources and fellowship with neighbors from across the entire Tenth Ward. You know, we move it around to be accessible and to ultimately hold ourselves accountable. So this month, one-on-one is at Christ Southern Mission Baptist Church under the direction of Pastor Jeffrey A. Rome, 6:30 to 7:30 this Monday, which is the 25th, and the address is 5630 Page Boulevard, and our esteemed speaker will be our Commissioner of Forestry, Alan Jankowski, as well as our first responders and our Neighborhood Improvement Specialists will be there as, as usual. So I look forward to seeing you out there. This will be our last month of the year, so come out and hopefully meet some new people, greet and get ready for the holidays, as the holidays are coming up. You know, there are a lot of people that are in need. There are a lot of Thanksgiving and resource and love giveaways going on. I'm definitely gonna announce those all on my Facebook that I do every Friday after the meeting, so you can catch all of them there, but I would like to definitely lift one that is keeping the spirit of Demetrius Johnson and make sure that people recognize that it won't be in the Tenth Ward this year. It'll be in the Thirteenth Ward with Alderwoman Boyd in Wildoun Park. I'm sure she's gonna make that announcement, and then there's also one at Peoples. Of course, there's Urban League that always stands in the gap and having theirs next week, so please make sure that you follow and get that information and share that information with your neighbors, loved ones that might be in need. I'll be praying for everyone for this holiday season to have a peaceful and blessed and joyful week.
Alderwoman from the Eleventh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Kappa Sigma chapter is having a happy hour today at 3763 Forest Park. They will begin drinking at 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So if you are so inclined to need some libation today, you can do that at the, at the establishment, which is Centennial, is there Centennial kickoff at Up Bar, U.P., B.A.R. Again, they're starting at 6:00 p.m. Additionally, they also have, the Sigma Legacy Foundation is having the unveiling of their mural project, the George Washington Carver mural, that will happen on Sunday at 12:15 p.m., and that's gonna be at the George Washington Carver House, which is located at, trying to boost the, let me get the address for you. It's on Bell Avenue, at 3035 Bell, and again, that begins at 12:15. On Tuesday, November 26th, the Urban League, as my esteemed colleague said, always standing in the gap, they are providing turkeys in their annual turkey giveaway, which begins on Tuesday, the 26th, at the Urban League location at 1408 North Kings Highway, beginning at 12:00 noon and ending at 3:00. So we look forward to everybody being able to get what they need.
Apologies, we cannot hang this in the chamber. Are the marshals up there?
So what do we pay them for?
We should just finish it out.
Okay. We are going to recess for a few minutes while we get this taken care of. Motion to excuse. All members are present. I will, Alderwoman from the Tenth, I will entertain, or Alderman from the Second, I will entertain a adjourn. It's been, Alderman from the Second.
Move that we adjourn.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the Second, seconded by the Alderman from the First, that we adjourn until December 6, 2024. Any discussion?
Aye.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Aye.